Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Rick Mueller.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Aleisha Ash.
Present.
Councilmember Bob Blanchard. Councilmember Gwen Calhoun.
Present.
Councilmember Rachel Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Craig Mount.
Present.
Councilmember Christine Wolf. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Mrs. Gray, will you take care of item number one, please?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I move that the agenda for the Special City Council meeting of November 16th, 2018, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, corrections? Seeing none, I'll call for a question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to new business. Mayor Pro Tem Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution 2018-082, Canvas of Primary Election. Should that say general?
Oh, yes.
General election be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, discussion? Okay, well, Ms. Adams, can you give us your staff report, please? You thought you were getting away with it, didn't you?
Damn. Dang. Mayor Mueller, members of council, as everyone is aware, we recently had an election on November 6th. The city had the mayoral seat, as well as three council member seats for election. We had six official and one writing candidate for council and two candidates for mayor. Of the candidates on the ballot and the writing candidate, Rich Frederick Mueller, was the highest vote getter for mayor and the candidates Carolyn Umfree, Sarah Pacheco, and William Benning were the highest vote getters for the council member seats. By approve, if approved today, this will certify the election results and the individuals will be sworn in and seated and take office effective midnight, January 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Any questions for Mrs. Adams on her report?
Did she say she's going to swear them in at midnight on?
I could. I could.
No comments or questions?
Okay, if there's no comments or questions, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. This then concludes our meeting, our special meeting. So, meeting is, special meeting is adjourned. We'll now move on to our work session. And the work session is a continuation of a previous work session dealing specifically with Personnel Rules and Regulations. And I would ask our personnel chief, Barbara, to come up and then, I don't remember where you left off, but you, if you orient us, we'll get there.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to excuse myself from the work session. I'm on the way out.
All right. Thank you.
Y'all have a good time with that.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for giving me this afternoon to complete Part II, Personnel Rules and Regs. My notes indicate that we got through recruitment, selection, and hiring off of the major changes by rules section. And so, today, I would like to start with classification and compensation. So, one of the big things that we came in and did on the classification and compensation rule is that we updated it to bring into play all of the things that we implemented with the 2015 New Class and Comp Study that y'all provided for us. So, we came in and we added in all of those things that we approved during that process into the new Personnel Rules and Regs. Secondary thing to that that we did that was a big change is that we added part-time employees to the compensation policy. The reason that was needed is that the current Personnel Rules and Regs cover full-time only and we had the Part-Time Employee Handbook and we consolidated that all into one. And as we go further into class and comp, I think we'll get a better understanding of that as we get into like the leaves and stuff because we do have part-time leaves now. So, that's all been incorporated into that. And I forgot to change the slide. We also added in what is currently an admin directive, as we talked about, which is for ad-pay. Ad-pay is things that we give, like, for example, to a police officer who serves on the SWAT team, for say, I don't know why that's moving. They, while they're serving on the SWAT team, they get ad-pay for that service. And so, those are ad-pay. So, we added the policy into that.
Excuse me, Barb.
Yes.
When you said add pay, is that A-D-D?
Yes. Yeah. Ad-pay. So, in other words, it's not part of their hourly rate, but it's a set dollar figure that they get for like their time and service on the SWAT team. Or, for example, if they're a paramedic, they may have ad-pay in a dollar amount. It's not an hourly wage. It's a flat dollar amount.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. We also put in the policy on travel time of what's compensable and what's non-compensable. That's actually defined in the federal law under the Fair Labor Standards Act, also known the FLSA. We just incorporated it into the policy there. And then, we put in on the overtime and comp time and stuff. We made some additions and clarifications there. So, comp time is exclusive to government entities. It's not allowed to be used in the private sector. What comp time is, is where that in lieu of overtime, an employee can be given time and a half comp time, which is additional time off at the same time and a half, but they don't have to be paid in overtime wages. So, we had added the information to comply with the Fair Labor Standards use of comp time to that policy, which included that they must be permitted to use it within a reasonable period of time and that management can direct and require employees to use comp time. And that if you leave service or you leave full-time service with the city, you are paid out your comp time. And again, accordance with the Fair Labor Standards Act, that's required. We also took another admin directive that we have that standby and call-out duty pay and added it to the Personnel Rules and Regs. In that, the big thing we did is we moved, removed a lot of the procedural stuff that was in there. And we're going to let that be determined by the individual departments is they need to be able to determine the procedures and their practices because it's individualized according, you know, to what department they are. But we did go ahead and clarify what happens if you fail to respond to standby, to let you know that you're not compensated for that. Obviously, if you don't respond, you wouldn't be compensated. So, we went ahead and added that in there. And we also put in the residency requirements. This matches the residency requirements that we have that are consistent with everything else. But in order to be able to do callback or standby, you need to live within a reasonable area of Sierra Vista because standby and call-out pay requires you to be compensated from the time of the call-out.
Is reasonable defined?
Yes, it is. It's 15 miles.
Okay.
Same as our residency requirement restriction. So, that's defined as 15 miles from the city limits.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, we removed the minimum, or actually, we didn't remove it. We updated the minimum time compensated from two hours to 1.5 hours. So, the reason for that, that we went to two hours is that that's the minimum that you can be paid. What we had was it was 1.5 hours and you got 30 minutes of travel time, but that's a little bit conflicting with the Fair Labor Standards as again, it states that the time starts from the time of the call-out and you depart your home. So, we just made that easier to comply with the Fair Labor Standards. And that's the purpose in that change there. On to the drug and alcohol. So, this has been made a standalone rule. Prior, it was called the Substance Abuse Policy and it was in the statement, Statement to Principles Rule that's in the current PRNR. So, it's a standalone rule in the new policy. It has a new name. There's been a lot of changes on both the state and the federal level recently. I don't know why that's moving. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not, I don't have it in my hand, so.
Timer.
It's, okay. So, we, it's a compliance-based policy that's Department of Health and Human Services, as well as the Department of Transportation. We also made it comply with the Arizona State Statutes. Lots of changes in the last few rules, the last few years here on the rules. So, we added definitions to this. We've done this actually with a lot of the policies and procedures, but there's a lot of acronyms and a lot of things that aren't understood. So, we went and added many definitions. So, we added the definition of what is always referred to under federal law as the MRO. That is the Medical Review Officer. And that is the doctor that reviews all the testing. And so, we went ahead and add that. We also updated the definition and made it a definition for drug paraphernalia. And we also defined exactly what a safety-sensitive position is, is those safety-sensitive positions that are subject to more drug and alcohol testing. Arizona enacted the medical marijuana a few years ago, and so, we brought into play that into the policy. We also updated the work rules to include disciplinary actions for violations of drug and alcohol policy, both for compliance with the policies and for safety. The big change that we made here is that in the current policy on substance abuse, all of the, any violation of substance abuse is immediate termination without the right of appeal. And so, we broke those out to where they're not all immediate termination and they're not all without right of appeal. A big example of that would be currently, it states that having alcohol in your possession on city property, including like the parking lot in a vehicle, would be a violation of the current substance abuse policy. So, I'm going to give you an example. If I go to Safeway at lunch and I buy a bottle of wine with my groceries and I have it in my car and I come back to City Hall, technically, I would be in violation of the current substance abuse policy. I would be subject to immediate termination without the right of appeal. We don't believe that was ever the intent of the policy or what we want to do, so we've eliminated that. And so, we've separated a lot of those out where they're not subject to immediate termination and they are also subject to appeal.
Barbara, does our health insurance cover treatment?
Yes.
For substance abuse?
Yes, we do. We cover both inpatient and outpatient treatment.
So, if somebody is, is let go immediately, then there's no room for working with somebody who may have a problem?
So, when they're let go immediately is due to a failed drug or alcohol test. And they do, even when somebody is let go, their insurance continues on, not indefinite, but it doesn't end that day. Would end like the end of the following month. And so, there's still some opportunity there. But the intent of the treatment is to get treatment prior to failing a drug or alcohol test. And we encourage treatment and we have treatment, again, available, not just on an outpatient basis, but we have treatment available in and outpatient and counseling and all that is provided under the insurance policy.
Mayor Mueller. Yeah, so, Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Calhoun. This is a very important point that you raised because it is our first inclination to want to help an employee that's in a situation like this. But the policy, as it stands right now, made it very, very difficult to do. Now, in some cases, obviously, if you have, you know, a city employee operating a city vehicle while under the influence, they get in an accident, that justifiably warrants immediate termination, something like that. But right now, the way it stands, it's on the, the burden is on the employee to contact us if they have an issue so that we can help them, as Barbara said, prior to, you know, failing a drug test. That puts us in a very difficult position, especially at zero tolerance.
Sure. Sure. I can see where there's a lot of balancing and stuff that has to happen. So, employees, though, and perhaps staff or directors who have some sense that there's an issue, would then work with that employee to try to resolve it before it becomes a major problem.
Absolutely. And we have a lot of referrals. And so, they are referred and then we can work with them on getting them. And that is the route that we want that to happen. If there's a problem, we want there to be a referral, whether it be a referral from somebody else, whether it be the employee walk in on their own or pick up the phone because they don't have to come through us. We've got tele-doctor 800 number. We've got AmeriBay. They do not even have to come through us, but we want to be proactive in that area. We don't want to be reactive to it. But, you know, regulatory requirements do require that we remain in compliance with that, but it's definitely is an area that we want to be proactive with.
Do you, have you found, this is a little off-topic, but do you find there's enough support in the community to, to help people or are you finding people aren't able to get help because there's not, something's not available that they need? Doctors or psychiatrists or therapists?
We, I wouldn't say that we have everything available directly in Sierra Vista that they need, but in the surrounding communities, which are covered under our plan, we haven't found there to be a lack of resources available. They may need to go to Tucson. We have Phoenix area also available. And we have not really seen that we can't to get them treatment or help, but it may not be directly in Sierra Vista.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay. Next policy that we added is new, time and attendance is new to the Personnel Rules and Regulations. It's actually not a new policy for us. Again, it comes out of the employee handbook. I think that it covers pretty much the things that we would expect to see in a time and attendance policy. The highlights of that are that, one thing that wasn't in the policy is that we define job abandonment and that just when the employee quits coming to work and we don't know where they are, we don't hear from them, that that would actually be job abandonment after three days. So, that was actually put in there as a definition. And then, Fair Labor Standards require that we define the work week, the 168-hour period. So, we did that in this policy as it seemed like the appropriate place to define that. And we also added the nursing mother's break, not currently covered anywhere, it's a fairly new thing and to get us in compliance with the Department of Labor there. Okay. I'm going to move on to the next section, which is the leave of absence. So, one thing that we've done is the vacation max has been tiered historically, and so, we've taken the tier out of that and done the vacation max, the same for all employees. We have not increased the maximum amount of numbers. It has been 336. It will remain 336 hours with this. We've just taken off the tiered schedule. So, technically, any employee, no matter what your tenure is, you can accumulate up to 336 hours maximum of vacation leave. We do not have many, this is a very few people that actually accumulate that amount of time, and we don't see that the need for the tier is still necessary. We've also put the exchange of vacation leave for compensation. It remains in the policy. We haven't really put it in there, but we have made a few changes to it. So, currently, an employee who has a minimum of 100 hours of vacation leave and has taken at least 40 hours within the year is eligible to exchange some hours for pay one time a year. There was a request that came some years back, a couple of, two and a half, three years ago. The employees wanted some changes to this because they wanted to be able to get that pay prior to Black Friday for the holiday season, and it was being paid on the second payday of December. So, changing the payday that it was paid on wasn't a big thing to us, but it meant that we had to wait until we did the changes so we could change the payday that it does. So, we did make that change so that they can get it. And then, we made some changes. So, currently, if they have a balance of 160 hours, they can sell, or the proposed, rather, I said currently and that's wrong, the proposed. They have a balance of 160 hours and they've taken at least 40 hours of vacation, during this period, they can sell back 40 hours for pay. If they have 240 hours or more, they can sell back 60 hours. And if they have 320 hours or more, they can sell back 80. And that also gets those that are getting close to that 336-hour cap, the ability to sell back some of that vacation time. And again, it will be the payday that is the 25th payroll so that they will be able to have it prior to the big shopping season.
Will that be before Small Business Saturday? Okay. That really wasn't a joke. It was, I wasn't laughing.
So, when is Small Business Saturday?
The Saturday after Thanksgiving.
So, yes. Yeah. It will then. It'll include that.
Oh. I don't shop Black Friday.
Yeah. Yeah. So, it will always be prior to Thanksgiving. The next section of leave of absences is coming in with a lot of changes based on the November 2016 enactment of what we often refer to as Proposition 206, which is the Fair Work and Healthy Families Act. This brought into play where we will be providing sick leave time for all employees, whether they're part-time or they're full-time, every 30 hours. So, the next part of this reg, and puts into the policy what we're currently complying with under that proposition. So, we went in and defined the differences between the full-time and part-time employee usage. Again, part-time wasn't in here prior, so this is added. The part-time policy is exactly what the law requires. They accrue one hour for every 30 hours' work. That's not really a pay period. That's not a month. It's just every time they hit 30, they receive an hour, 30, 60, 90, like that. And that's how it's written to do. Our full-time policies, our current accruals remain the same. They exceed the requirement that is enacted under this new statute, and so, there is no change to that. We did remove the section on reinstatement of sick leave because our current policy has reinstatement of 20% of your sick leave if you're rehired within one year. So, to come into compliance with 206, we've changed that to be that if you return within nine months, all sick leave will be reinstated that was not paid. So, that brings that into compliance. And then, somewhat of a minor change, but it is a change, is that vacation and sick leave have both changed to quarter hours. They've been half-hours, but we use quarter hours in everything else. And so, to be consistent, we moved that to quarter as well. We removed the sick leave exchange and added a tiered structure based on seniority for payout of sick leave. This is a big change. This is a very popular change. The proposed is to let employees hold on to their sick leave and then to get paid out based on a tiered system. So, currently, they get paid out if they retire under an ASRS or PSPRS system. The new proposal would be that they get, if they're here anything less than five years, they would not be eligible for any payout of any sick leave that remained on the books. Five to 10 years, they would be eligible for 50% of the first 480. 10 to 15 years, 60%. And 15-plus years, 70%. Anything above the 480 remains at the 25%, just like it is right now. So, the real difference here is that it's based on your tenure versus based on retiring We also allowed or put in to allow bereavement leave to be used, sick leave to be used for bereavement. That is one thing we found to be lacking in one area that now, any employee earns sick leave. Part-time employees do not have bereavement leave. It's a full-time benefit. So, there's a couple of things that came into play here. We added this so that part-time employees who are earning sick leave, who need to use it for bereavement, can do so. And also, for employees that, you know, are even full-time, say that, you know, they need more days than the three days or significant travel or something, they can dip into their sick leave for that as well. So, that was an added. And then, the sick leave caps, and they are, it's 40 hours based on Proposition 206. So, part-time will be 40 hours. If it's for yourself, in other words, you're taking sick leave because you're the employee, there is no cap currently. But there has been caps in other areas, like, for example, if you were taking care of a family member or something. So, we've moved those to match like what's in FMLA and stuff. So, if you have a qualifying event under the Family Medical Leave Act, you can use sick leave now to coincide with those hours.
Barbara?
Yes, ma'am.
If you are completely out of sick leave hours, do you just take leave without pay?
You would, you could be in leave without pay. You could also use any comp time that you had on the books. You can also use vacation time. Vacation time can always be used for sick leave, but sick leave cannot always be used or cannot be used for vacation time. So, that would be. And I'm going to cover her interest to me, but we've also added the short-term disability policy into place for employees. So, if they are sick or injured, they, there's an insurance policy in place that pays 66 and 2/3 of their time. That is a 28-day elimination period, and then that kicks in, and they can supplement the 66 and 2/3 with their sick leave balance. And so, they wouldn't be using all sick leave. They would be combining the policy with sick leave to help that stretch a little further in significant situations. We also added and updated the Military Leave Section, which is just there, the Uniform Services and Reemployment Rights Act that came into play in 1994. We've been working off an admin directive, so we just put it in the Leave of Absences because it is technically a leave of absence that is mandated under federal law, so that was added. Again, we added and updated the Family Medical Leave Act, known as the FMLA policy, and that came into play in 1993. We're in compliance with it. It was just an admin directive versus being in the Personnel Rules and Regs, and so, we've incorporated that in here as well. We've also updated the light duty situation. This policy on light duty was written before FMLA came into play, and so, we've changed the time, you know, to correspond with FMLA, which is three months, 12 weeks, and then the time after that to add to the same thing. And that's in a 24-month period of time. And we also did clarify, this was never clarified, and so, it led to some confusion and some understanding, is that that's per injury or occurrence, not cumulative. So, say that we have somebody that is injured and they exhaust that, and then they come back to work and there's another situation. It's per occurrence. So, we just wanted that to be very clear. So, that was a clarification that was made. Okay. The following sections were added. And I think we just talked about the short-term disability. In 2017, the city purchased a short-term disability policy as part of our medical plan to cover employees that are sicker, injured. And so, the policy for that was added. We also came in and added the voting leave policy. That is based on the Arizona State Statute. And that has been added. We also added victim leave, which is also another one that's based on the Arizona State Statute.
I'm just wondering what that is.
The voting or the?
The victim.
The victim leave. A victim of domestic violence, a victim of stalking, a victim, and they're clearly defined in there, but it's also in 206, as well as in the state statute. See, domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, that's, those are the issues where those can be used. We defined terminal leave, and that, terminal leave is when you're getting ready to retire or leave city service and you go on leave prior to your actual termination date. So, just put the defined information in that. And then, emergency closure, it's been in there, but it's been called inclement weather. And so, we thought that a more encompassing term would be emergency closure, and we just clarified that if you're full-time and there's an emergency closure, you're paid your normal work hours, for clarification there.
Are there time, are there times assigned to any of those particular kinds of leave? What, how much? What, how much, how much time you can take for a particular, for instance, the, well, the victim or the voting or, voting I assume is just to go vote.
Yeah, it is. So the law in Arizona requires that they have a three-hour window before or after work hours to be able to vote. So let's say, for example, their schedule's at 8:00 AM and the post's open at 7:00, there's not a three-hour window there, so we have to give them a three-hour window, either at the start, lunch, the beginning or sometimes. So that is defined by the statute as three hours. The victim leave is by, to Proposition 206, it's going to be up to 40 hours, however, provided that they have more leave on the books, that would be allowed, but it would be required a minimum of 40 there.
That's good. You don't have to go through all of them, Barbara. I haven't finished reading that wonderful document, so I'd need to ask a couple of questions like that.
No problem. You're welcome. So bereavement leave, we expanded and added eligible family members to, we've looked at that, we've had situations come up and we recognize that there were some things that we probably needed to add. So we've added a grandchild. We've added stepparents, stepchildren, and legal dependents to the definition, so you can use bereavement leave for those. And then again, as I said, we're also going to be allowing sick leave to be used as additional bereavement leave is necessary. And it came to our attention that we had, our current policy says that if you travel out of state. We changed it to read significant travel to 300 miles one way as, depending on where you're going, I can be in New Mexico, which is out of state, is closer than, say, I need to go to Kingman, Arizona, or something like that. So to make that more consistent and fair, we changed that to miles versus the wording "out of state," the only change that was done there. And then leave without pay was redefined and again, leave without pay in the current policy was done before FMLA and YOSSERA and many of those leaves that are now mandated under federal law were enacted. And so we've brought this into play to consider that those laws take the priority first and then there can be additional leave without pay based on that. And then disciplinary actions, there's a couple of three pages here and it looks like a lot, but just to clarify, this is what we refer to as like the A to Z. There isn't anything in here that's not covered within the policies and procedures. This is just a concise place that you can go to and you can see the list of violations. And so they're, you know, listed out one by one and the reason we refer to them as the A to Z is instead of bulleted points, we say A, B, C, D, and that's how they're done now. So everything goes back to reference a policy that's in place. It's just, you know, what the policy violation would be. And again, we've come in and we've separated some out. I gave a good example, we had where if you had a violation of the substance abuse policy, it was automatic termination. We've broke that down into several different levels of disciplinary action in the A to Z. So that's what these pages technically do, is they just bring into play the list of all the disciplinary actions that can come in. And then where there's policies that have been added that weren't existing at the time, for example, we now have P cards, we have purchasing cards. We didn't have them when the policy was originally done, so there wasn't one. We've added those types of things that are currently in the policy there. And so that's a list of them. It looks long, but again, it's just bringing them all together into one central location in the manual for easy reference. Another change we made is that we have added unpaid administrative leave for specific reasons only. So we currently don't have anything in the policy for unpaid administrative leave. We have only paid administrative leave. So we've made that very specific. You can only be placed on unpaid administrative leave for the specific reasons listed. For criminal charges pending, for an employee who's incarcerated, for the period following a positive alcohol test, or for the period when you're requesting a confirmation or refu, period following a positive drug test, we can place you on unpaid administrative leave. If you are placed on unpaid administrative leave and you have vacation time or comp time on the books, you may use, that would be paid out. On disciplinary suspension, we changed that from days to hours. And the thought process behind that is that we have employees that work eight-hour shifts, we have employees that work 10-hour shifts, employees that work 12-hour shifts, and employees that work 24-hour shifts. And so a day isn't the same to every employee. So versus going to days, we have changed that to read 24 hours. So, you know, if I'm working at the fire department on 24 hours, that's one day, but if I'm working at admin, three eight-hour shifts, it's three days. So again, to bring that in, we've made that hours. Next rule is on the grievance procedure. We've updated the procedures for presentation of a grievance. Currently, the grievance procedure reads that it must go through the immediate supervisor. We've given them options to, where they don't have to send that through the immediate supervisor, that can go now to the department head or it can go to human resources. The policy still encourages everybody to go through their chain of command and resolve any issues that they have at the lowest level. Also, we've defined what is a grievable situation. So that is a disciplinary pay rate reduction, or if an approved pay increase is denied or reduced based on an unsatisfactory performance evaluation, you can file a grievance. If you've been placed on administrative leave without pay, misapplication or violation of city personnel rules and regulations that impacts the terms and conditions of employment, misapplication or violation of city administrative directives for a written reprimand, a written performance assessment, or a suspension of 24 hours or less. And that's less because you can go to a hearing officer for more. And also currently, there is no allowance for an extension of grievance and so as a benefit to employees, we realize that some situations, there may need to be more than the 30 days and so we have allowed for them, at certain situations, to request an extension of the 30-day period. Okay, and some of the technical changes, a response to a grievance has been changed from within seven calendar days to preferably within 15 calendar days, but no later than 30 calendar days. We found in certain situations that seven calendar days is not possible. A lot of these take a lot of research, a lot of pulling of documents, talking with people and that seven days is not always realistic there. So we've changed it to the, again, we're going to prefer to get those in 15, but in certain circumstances and how in-depth, we've changed that to 30 days. And then we've clarified that if you're unsatisfied with the answer from the department director or human resources, they may appeal to the sick leave manager. So currently, that was bypassed in the policy and it didn't, it's not in the current policy, so we've cleared that in the current policy to let them know that they can do that. And that includes on the harassment and discrimination policy. Currently, it says that if they're unhappy, they can go straight to the hearing officer. So we've made that, if you're unhappy with the decision that's made by the department director of human resources, you go to the city manager first. Okay, then appeal to hearing officer. We've provided a list of matters subject to appeal to the hearing officer. These are not a lot different than what's currently in there. Some of the due process has have changed. So currently, it's written notice of dismissal, demotion or suspension, written dated answer rendered by department directors to a formal grievance. And so the proposed list is to a written notice of termination of employment for cause, an involuntary demotion, or suspension of more than 24 hours, a disciplinary pay rate reduction, or placed on administrative leave without pay. So a little bit of change, not a lot there. Also, the current hearing date is no later than 30 days. We needed to make that a little bit longer, so we've added 45 days to that. Part of the issue is that is scheduling with the hearing officer that is designated and so we've just expanded that to where you have a little bit more time. The other thing is both sides get to present documents and stuff and sometimes it takes a little longer to be able to get those together to the hearing officer so they can set a date. So we felt it was very reasonable if we looked at expanding that from 30 to 45 days. And then the hearing officer and city manager responses are currently both at seven calendar days and we've recommended extending that to 10 calendar days. Oftentimes, somebody can be gone a week or a week just isn't enough and so moving that to 10 days. And then last, we come to separation of employment, not a new rule, it's a changed title. Currently, it is in the policy titled reduction in force or RIF, which we oftentimes hear referred to. Currently, it's one way that classified employees would be laid off in reverse order based on seniority, so the newest employees. So the change is that the order of the layoff is now determined on multiple factors, not just seniority. And those do include seniority, but it also includes qualifications and skills, performance, and disciplinary actions. So it's been expanded there. That is the last rule that we have in the proposed personnel rules and regulations. I'll be happy to answer any questions, go back to anything, expand on anything.
Any questions for Ms. Fleming? Ma'am?
If, after a year or two, something comes up that change needs to happen, what, what's the process for making a change in any particular rule?
Yeah, so, Eva, you want to do that? Go ahead.
Well, and this gets into the next steps of the process as well. After this meeting, the goal would be to place this on your next agenda for the regular meeting in December, so there'll be yet another work session ahead of that if you have any more questions regarding it. You would be, you know, basically repealing the ordinance that's in place because the personnel rules reside in ordinance right now. So you will be adopting then the personnel rules by resolution instead. Now this gets to your question, Councilmember Calhoun. By doing it by resolution, it will be much, much easier to make the amendments that probably will need to be, be done and update our manuals and books accordingly. There is always going to be changes in either federal rules and regulations, state laws, or things that maybe we're seeing from our own standpoint that aren't quite working right, that there will always need to be updates to this document. So, very clearly, we can do that by resolution then, at any time.
Thank you.
So again, we'll see this the Tuesday before at the work session.
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll vote on it on Thursday, first meeting, and first meeting in December.
Yes.
Anything else, any last words of wisdom, Barbara?
I just want to say that I appreciate your time on a Friday afternoon and for us to be able to get through this.
No, we appreciate it. This is something that's been, been needed to be done for a while and slugging, slugging through it with us was probably the least of your worries, I'm sure. But we appreciate your efforts and thank you, thank you for your staff too.
Yeah, and I, thanks, you know, very much to my staff. They put a lot of hard work and a lot of hours into this, but so have the employees.
Employee council, yep.
The employee council, the department directors. Just, it's been a long process, but it has been an inclusive process and it's been very good, you know? It's always good to see things from other perspectives and to hear things and hey, we see it this way, but somebody else sees it. And, you know, I think through all the meetings and through all the reviews that people have done and the questions that have been asked, we ended up with a big Q and A that answered a lot of questions and stuff and I think that the process has been a good process. But I know that all of us are also ready to see the process end and for these to go into effect hopefully for us on January 1 of the new year.
Okay. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you.
Before I close the meeting, I just want to say, I, I should recognize the fact that we have our, our now three councilmen, three council persons elect in the, in the audience and appreciate you being here. So with that, meeting adjourned.
We do have to say one more thing. We have to thank so many of the staff for being here and so, so involved and so turned on to this conversation. We really appreciate that you're here. Okay.
That was it.
He's been adjourned for a minute.
Oh, I so appreciate you staying to hear my comments. Thank you, ma'am.